Well, I have six o'clock, so I think we'll go ahead and start our special meeting of the Kattati City Council, City Kattati for Tuesday, April 20th, 2021. Do we need to do a roll call? Or no?
Yes, I'll go ahead and take roll call.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember Sparks?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here, thank you very much, Ms. Burgess. And I guess at this point now, we have two items. One on our city council goals and objectives, the revised, and the budget study session for general fund and special revenues fiscal year 2021, 2022. And at this point, I would ask if there is any comment on any of those.
Mayor Moore, at this time, we have no attendees.
You know, I don't know if that's good or bad, but I'll take it. So with that in mind, I will turn this over to Mr. Obed to discuss our revised goals and objectives.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So in the packet is a redlined update, goals and objectives were discussed at the strategic planning meeting. And so to recap what is in the attached fact report, the edits that were shown the last time were all accepted as is, and then they were additionally edited, redlined strikeout in the version that you have attached, just to try to keep it sort of track. So the edits consist of a combination of things that were discussed in the meeting, actually primarily discussed in the meeting and a couple edits that came in after the meeting, most notably the new goal for equity and inclusivity. So I'll just run through them real quick and then please stop me and ask if you have any questions. The first one is under goal one, and the comment in the meeting, in the strategic planning meeting was that rather than under objective F, actively work to, rather than reduce the impact, we had talked about the fact that we're kind of beyond that point and we're looking to mitigate and adapt, and so that's three parts to read. Under goal two, rather than under objective C, rather than maintaining emergency preparedness, improving emergency preparedness, including wildfire preparedness as a subset, so that was just moved to the end of the sentence. And then under the same goal, a new objective was added G, but goal three was, you recall the discussion at the time was that maybe goal three, which was pursue opportunities to increase efficiencies of city operations is that we've accomplished a lot since this goal was originally developed and that it may better live as an objective under another existing goal. And so that's what effective G is under, under goal two, is a condensed version of what would have previously been goal three. And then what was goal four, but now is goal three, community engagement. There was discussion around exploring the possibility of incorporating neighborhood-level programming into city activities, and so that was added as an objective, objective C. And then finally, goal four is the new, the new goal four is a new goal. And this was developed, so at the meeting, there was a desire, a general desire among the council to include an equity and inclusivity goal, but the actual language was going to be developed after, between these, between that meeting and this meeting. And so I reached out to all the council members and I got various feedback from various council members and then sort of add altogether into, I think, a goal that hopefully represents everyone's input. And I guess I'll leave it at that unless there's any questions about any of the proposed edits.
Well, I will look up to the council, looks like Commissioner Ford, Councilmember Ford, sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Damian, these look great. I really appreciate the new goal. And the only slight tweak I would make is to the word in, in objective four B, advance equality in health. Equality is a tricky word that is sort of largely not used in these circles anymore. Equity tends to be more the word that's, that's used. It realizes that people come with different needs and so equal treatment is not what's needed, what's needed is, is whatever's needed. So that, that's a very slight tweak. I, I really like the two, the two objectives under goal four, one about city operations and one about working with the city. I think, I, goal four B, to me, fits very well with the discussion we started to have last week around the experiences of Mr. Lee and, and that's the, sort of the, the framework in which I'd want to continue those discussions. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. So equality to equity, that is what you're proposing?
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you, I wanted to address the same goal, goal four B. To give some background, Councilmember Ford and Mr. Obed and I all met together and, and worked to try to come up with some language and some of that is, most of that has made it into this goal. Our draft that we had spoken about before said for, for objective four B, advance equitable public safety and health in partnership with Kattati residents. So I think when the public safety got taken out, that's probably when the word equality found its way in there. And I'm just wondering why public safety was removed from that draft?
So it was, you know, it was partly into to try to consolidate different, you know, different comments that I got. And then I think the broad, the broad, sort of, the broad goal there, or the broad, well, the broad goal is that the, you know, that racism is a societal issue, right? And so at this level, we want to really tackle it at a societal level. And so it was, that's, that's, I think, the genesis of the revision and the wording is really to look at it from more of a societal level rather than a more micro level. The first, the first objective, I think, covers all of the city services. And then the next one is more of a broad kind of society objective.
I think it would be important to include public safety in there. I, I agree that, that equity and inclusion diversity needs to be handled at a societal level, but one of the main ways that our city interacts with, with residents of Kattatis through our public safety. And I, I think it's important to call out, and we do want to have equitable public safety outcomes. And not to say that there's any, not to say that we're deficient now, but just that that's an important goal moving forward and it's a good way for us to communicate our values to the community, to include that in there.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, I, I think the goals are really meant to be much broader and they're not down to specific projects or things that we want to do. I think that we would want to be equitable in everything we do. And by specifically putting in public safety, you're really narrowing it down. I would argue that we want to be equitable in, you know, things even as basic as water and sewer and any other services, you know, be they recreation services or, or whatever. So I think that there's opportunities within all of the things that we provide as a city. So I prefer to leave that broader and if we want to have, you know, a specific project against a goal, which is, you know, the things that we kind of go after from a budget level, then, then I think that's where specifics fit in. But that's just my two cents.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Landman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Yeah, I like the addition of equity. Essentially, we're talking fairness and sometimes that isn't exactly the same exact measure in every single circumstance for every different person. So that's probably a good addition, I can certainly support that. I, I think I agree more with Councilmember Harvey on adding public safety, that was a specific call out to objective B, when we've already, I believe, as I read, objective A covered all city government operations, as we should. I mean, if we're going to then call out one specific city government operation in B, might we not then really have to list every single one separately? Granted, some might be more important and have more impact in the public than others at various times, but they all potentially could. So I prefer not to confuse that, I think, and just stick with objective A because it really does encompass that. And if anybody wants to make that point that something to do with public safety should be held to making sure that it's inclusive and equitable, all they have to do is point to that. I would be supportive of that, so just my input. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I don't think I need to add anything more to that conversation that then has already been added. Councilmember Sparks, you wanted to continue on there?
Yes, just to, to Councilmember Landman's point, I feel that objective A, it, it does include city government operations, but then the way we have it worded it, it calls out specific things in a sublist after it. So I, I would feel comfortable if we added public safety and called that out specifically under objective A, along with those other specifics that are there. I think that in our current culture, people, I think public safety is an area where people want to see a higher level of focus from cities and, and local governments in terms of ensuring equi- equity. And I agree with Councilmember Harvey that it's important in all areas. I just think that the public is sort of expecting it to be treated with a greater level of scrutiny right now. So that is why I think it's really important to make it specific.
Councilmember Landman, Vice Mayor Landman?
I will answer to either. Good point. I would suggest then, for consistency and to go along with what we're saying, let's just simplify objective A, ensure that all city government operations are inclusive and equitable, period.
Councilmember Harvey?
I guess I'm a little bit confused because Councilmember Sparks said there's a list of departments. What am I not seeing on this page that has a list of departments that doesn't include public safety? I don't see a list of departments.
Goal two, objective A.
I don't, I didn't mean to say departments. If I said departments, that was a mis-
Oh, okay.
I, I was-
That's what, excuse me, I am looking at right-
I'm sorry. I meant that there were, there were specifics called out, specific items called out in that line, sorry.
But they were applicable, as I read it, to all government operations, which includes public safety. And it was talking about hiring and promotions and opportunities and, and services to residents. I didn't see anything specific to a department in that part of the sentence.
Did you, do you want me to respond? I'm sorry, man.
No, you're certainly walking to Councilmember Sparks.
I, I, you're right, there's no specific departments. I, I don't think that the public understands necessarily our department structure, so public safety to people in the public would, would just be an important area that might seem similar in their minds to other topics, but that, that might look, I don't know what I'm trying to say exactly, but that consistency of referring to departments, I don't think is going to be as clear to people in the public. So I, I, I think that if there's a way to include public safety as a way of communicating our values to people who are reading this, that would be important and maybe override consistency among, you know, equality between the departments in, in the language.
Well, in the past, what, what we've done, what we've done is when the departments prepare their budgets and they talk about the things that they're doing, they reference these objectives. So where I would see that connection would be when public safety puts together their things, they would highlight this objective, which is what it is that they're trying to do with those fundings and those projects to meet this objective. That's kind of usually where that tie to departments comes in, is those objectives are referenced in the budget.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, just want to point out, there are some department-level objectives in goal two. So it's not completely, it would not be inconsistent to call out public safety, you know, equity or, I'm, I'm struggling to come up with the right words to describe what it is, what the particular goal, a particular objective might be around public safety. It would be in the clause that says equitable services to all residents somehow specifically mentions public safety and policing as one particular area of focus to, to ensure that operations are inclusive and equitable. And I don't see a, I don't see a consistency problem that would make us list all departments. I, I think it's completely reasonable for the, for the council to have an objective that is focused on one or two areas of service without saying, those same. I mean, the objectives about hiring and promotions and opportunities and contracting do go across all our operations and equitable services in general, but the place where that mostly is in the public consciousness right now is around public safety and policing, and I think that's, I, I'm, I'm not coming up with good wording, a way to, to put it in four A, I think it belongs in four A more than four B, but I would, I would be quite comfortable with finding a way to, to use this document to signal that we get it, that that's one area where people have concerns about inclusivity and equitable treatment.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yeah, well, there's a couple of ways we could do this. I agree, something perfect isn't coming to mind right away, it's not usually something that happens for me regularly anyhow, but if we really, if all of us felt we had to specifically call out the police department, which I'm personally not comfortable doing, I feel like you're signifying there's an issue there a little bit. Nevertheless, I understand the concern and interest specifically in that with the public, the headlines of the day certainly haven't escaped me. We could say, right after equitable services, comma, including public safety, comma, to all references, and that specifically calls it out. I think frankly, for me personally, I'd rather just add all, ensure that all city government operations, than it said it's included, and we're not specifically signaling it out as a problem child, but I'll go with the will of the council and that. But I think either of those would do the job probably. And the good news is, whatever way it goes, I think it'll work for whatever needs we have for this going forward. I think it'll do the job, I think we're just, as people naturally do, focusing on the minutia of trying to wordsmith and it's good to put the work into that, but usually later you recognize that it wasn't as important as you thought at the time.
Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you. I wanted to make one point, which is that the, the fact of being, if, if we were to include something about public safety, I don't think that that signals that we're attacking our police department as, and saying that there's an issue there. There are many things on this list of goals that are not issues, that are nevertheless objectives, that promote a balanced budget. We've done a good job having, we've won awards for our budget. So the fact that there's an objective about the budget doesn't signal that there's a problem with our budgeting and actively pursuing grant opportunities, we've done an excellent job with that, it doesn't signal that there's a problem with it, that it's in the objective. At our, at the first annual report that Chief Parish gave us last week, he said that, in that report, it said the Kattati Police Department is a progressive police department and equitable policing and equitable public safety outcomes are a goal of progressive police departments. So I think that it's, I, I don't think it's signaling that there's an issue to, to have that as a goal, that's just a goal that we would expect a progressive department and progressive city to have.
Thank you. Well, it seems to me that we're splitting hairs here. I think we've already incorporated the fact that we want it to be equitable, we want to include equity in our approach to everything that we do at the city. And I am not comfortable in putting in public safety, or, I mean, really, in other words, you can put in public safety, but we don't have a fire department, so we really know it's talking about the police department. And I don't know that it's necessary, as, as fellow Councilmember Landman indicated, that we're calling out the police, and that's what it feels like to me. But if we have an equitable approach in everything that we do, then we're going to cover everything. Councilmember Sparks?
I'm sorry, that was a leftover hand, sorry about that.
Okay.
So Mayor, would I, I mean, certainly what I can do is, is emphasize, I think, per Councilmember Landman, definitely emphasizing the equitable services by ensure that, rather than city, ensure that city government operations are inclusive and equitable, ensure that all city government operations are inclusive and equitable to maybe further emphasize that point?
I would be okay with that. Do we have kind of a general consensus on that or do we need further conversation? Okay, if that's the case, then I would be happy to entertain a motion on that.
Move to approve the objectives and goals as edited and changed with the one addition on goal four, to ensure that all, all city government operations.
I'll second that.
And then just to make sure, add that, we also have under objective B changing equality to equity.
Yes.
Yes, my motion includes that too, thank you for the correction.
And that I will second.
Thank you. Ms. Burgess, could we get a roll call on that, please?
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
No.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes. Thank you. Let the record settle, it's a four one vote on the revised draft with inclusion of equity in there. Thank you very much, and I think we would move on to our budget study session now. Before we get into that, I will open it up to any questions or public comments before we get into the budget study session, if there are any interested in that.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. For our attendees tonight, be sure to use your icon on your smart device or desktop computer if you'd like to raise your hand. Otherwise, if you're dialing in from your telephone, please hit star nine. And that will end public comment.
Thank you very much. So with that, I will turn it over to our Director of Administrative Services, Ms. Quarter.
So good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, fellow staff, our Q E participants, and then future participants, we're going to watch this in the future. Tonight, we'd like to provide to you for discussion, our first budget study session for fiscal year 2021, 22. And if more of you have pulled the slides, thank you. So with this study session, we'll first go over what the tentative budget schedule is, including the anticipated dates. Next, go over some economic assumptions that are built into this proposed budget, get into some of the actual summary evaluation of general fund revenues. And then after we go over the revenues, just because there's so much data here, I want to give a brief pause for comments and questions, talking about that information up through the revenues for general fund. And then we'll jump right into the general fund department expenditures and followed by another pause for questions and ending with the proposals for special revenue funds. So as Damian, we just discussed back on March 16th, we brought to council, we brought in the strategic planning session, and we went over our goals and objectives as they correlated to the department projects. So we use kind of those goals and objectives that we had them then, and now again, we'll revise them as they come back again for our projects to make sure they are coded and correctly related to our new objectives as well. And we use those projects to develop the city's objectives and our budget proposal for the general fund revenues and expenditures as they are presented tonight. So each department went through, okay, this is how much this project is anticipated to cost, extra time for staffing, et cetera, and built that into this budget, proposed our budget for the year. And we then accumulated all, it is reviewed by the Finance Administrative Services Department as well as the City Managers Department. And we kind of go through the detail minutia and present it back to you so we can get final comments or via questions back from you and concerns you might have or inquiry. And then we break it up into different study sessions because there is so much detail in our budget book and our budgets for our many different funds. So we'll bring you back again on May 18th to talk about the enterprise funds, which are our water sewer funds, as well as our internal service funds. We'll also talk about our capital projects that we're programming and the correlating transfers in and out. And so with that transfers in and out, that will affect those final general fund balances related to reserves and how much we're anticipating to use in the reserves for the capital projects. And so we do anticipate to also bring back a quick update on the general fund summary on that May 18th as well. And then hopefully looking forward to that June 8th, final budget adoption. So let's jump right in with how we built the proposed budget for fiscal year 21, 22. So we're finding ourselves in a much different place than we were at this same time last year. As you might have already seen in the worksheets provided in the agenda packet, we are in a much different place than where we were conservatively budgeting last year. We had no idea what the economic impact was going to be, we had our estimates, we were using those best available information, using our consultants and what economic data is out there, projecting things based on a, on a V-type recession recovery versus a W and trying to guesstimate what the impacts of these different COVID-related economic crises were going to be. And this is where we still are finding ourselves, we're still in recovery mode. We definitely were not as adversely impacted as many as our neighboring cities, but we are still in a recovery mode and are looking forward to a future where we are back on our projection from where we were previously. And so that, what that timing of recovery is, again, we're still using our best available information. We aren't quite sure when we're going to fully recover, but we're going to get there soon and, and we anticipate to happen a lot sooner. But again, we're budgeting conservatively. We also aren't sure what additional legislative impacts are going to come out of this. It's been a roller coaster again, but we do know that we are anticipating approximately $1.4 million in federal funds, and this is a one-time fund revenue replacement that we are budgeting and expecting to receive within the next fiscal year. And so that is a big chunk of money that's coming in and you'll see that kind of jump in other revenues as we keep going, looking forward. Some of those other forecasting assumptions, again, the sales tax and measure S, we're finding out that they were relatively secure during this crisis, we, though they did- We, though they did come down, we anticipated that them to come down a lot more than they did. And we are adjusting accordingly and making sure that our plan going forward is correct, but we also know that there are changes that are on their way, primarily related to a possible reduction in sales tax related to Amazon distribution centers and the allocation of sales tax for those distribution centers. And we also are anticipating the cannabis business tax. So we, when we initially brought this on, we were hoping businesses were going to get off and running, right? But we're finding that it is taking them a little bit longer to get the feet under them, get everything developed. There's a lot more state enforcement and regulations they have to go through. And so it does just take time for these good businesses that we have here in Khatati to continue to develop, to provide that cannabis business tax. So we do anticipate them to grow, but we're pulling back our estimates on the percentage growth year over year. And again, our sales tax, our revenue base is very different than our other cities. So we don't currently have that hospitality industry-related sales tax or the T O T tax that comes with that. And so we're working on balancing those revenue streams and making us more of a, less of a unicycle and more of a tricycle, so we have more likely to stand on when it comes to revenue adjustments and future anticipated economic crises or recessions in our future. So here's another graph, hopefully it pops up, but it shows our revenue trends year over year for the last 10 years. So another overlay, we brought this in last year when we were doing all this deep dive into what we can plan for. In order to know what to plan for, you have to know what's happened in the past. And so with that, we took a look at, you know, what are percentage changes year over year for these different types of recessions? And we are seeing kind of how we planned, or we were anticipating and hoping was that this was going to be more of a V-type recession, not that great recession where it was a deep U that lasted several years. We see now at the end of that, it is a deep down, but we're hoping we're going to come straight back up and recover in a, in a better manner going forward. So what are some of our other forecast assumptions? So we talked a little bit about revenues, and these are our limited resource. They are the ones that we're continuing to develop and work on with our economic development efforts. And then with that, we also have limited resources and constraints that those resources can provide. So our operating services, our service levels, we're constrained by those revenues as to what additional services, what additional capacity that we can provide our citizens based on the revenue capacity. It's, it's easy to expand and provide additional services or create better new capital projects when you have the secure and stable, super growing revenue streams. And so it's finding that balance for having reserves for future anticipated economic downturns, as well as providing exceptional service level and maintaining our debt capacity, our liabilities, the insurance, the capital projects, our pension debt, how, finding that balance of all those different pieces. And again, a big piece of that balance was us, and thankfully our voters, passing the Measure S. That is a significant piece of us being able to plan for our future. This budget document, even our proposed document, would be significantly different if we did not have a plan for that Measure S into the future. This is, thank you. This is, this is huge for the city, and I'm glad that we can plan for that into our So a few summary highlights to the proposed budget. This includes maintaining the balance and excess reserve of the minimum balance. So we have a resolution where we have to maintain at least a 25% of our operating expenditures in our general fund every year. And this is a best practice across the GFOA that you would have that 25% requirement. And this has allowed us to maintain that balance in funds in order to meet the needs of emergencies. And so we continue to make sure we meet and well exceed that 25% of operating expenses every year, even our proposed budgets. And you'll find if you look at the worksheets, we also usually, even though we budget at, you know, 50 or 60%, we end up coming in with our final numbers in the next year when compared to actuals as significantly higher. And that is due to our conservative budgeting methodology, where we anticipate revenues to be in line with expectations and not far exceed expectations. We do not shoot for the stars when it comes to revenue. However, when it comes to expenses, we do anticipate and budget very conservatively with expenditures, including staffing costs. So we do staff at full capacity, which means that everyone's employed, any staff position that's open is, is filled all year long. And those staffing costs include those negotiated adjustments, as well as our lump sum payments to PERS, as well as the increased anticipated insurance cost, which is definitely an increasing factor in our budget these days. We did also include of note, increase in capital projects, which are going to use approximately $2.3 million of reserves. That's included in the worksheets, in the summary worksheets, because they wanted to provide a big picture of what's going on. But again, the capital projects is going to come back at the next budget study session. We don't have the final detailed numbers on that yet, so that could be a moving target, but that's what's anticipated right now in the proposed budget. And also included with the general fund department budgets is the continued payments of those internal service funds. These are our vehicle replacement funds, as well as our compensated absences funds. And this is dealing with that liability, that future liability component. We want to make sure we're keeping an eye on that and we're taking care of things as they come up, rather than being shocked when we need to replace a giant truck or, you know, a new vehicle. We need to plan for that in our future. So those were the highlights. And so I want to get into a little bit more detail into the general fund. So I do this every single time, but what is a general fund? So general fund is the primary fund that is used by a government entity. It is used to record all the resources and inflows and all the outflows that are not associated with a special purpose fund. And a special purpose fund are those that are legally restricted. So there are certain monies that the city does receive, taxes and fees and stuff, that they have to be used for a specific purpose, whether it's for traffic flow improvements or techno, what other parks, right, parks is another one. We get specific revenue sources for those, for those funds, and that's the purpose of those funds. These are anything that is not that. So by definition, it's the remainder. It's the balance that's not specifically identified for special purposes. So the activities that these other extra funds are, they pay for all of the core administration and operational tasks of our government entity. So this is all of our core services. It is police, public works, recreation, community development, city management, administrative services, and the rest of the infrastructure that is not, again, not special purpose, not water, not sewer, or our special parks, right? It's paid by a special fund and usually additionally funded by the general fund. So the operating inflows or revenues are what allow the city to continue these operations from year to year. So from fiscal year 20 to '21 to the proposed '21, '22 fiscal year is an increase of approximately 13.5%. Most of the types are really consistent, showing a slight increase as we recover from the COVID-19 recession. However, you'll note, again, the other revenue includes that $1.4 million in federal aid, and the charges for services are decreasing due to the anticipated completion of development So since I'm a very visual person, we like to provide lots of other graphs in detail of these inflows. So when it really comes to comparing the estimated actuals to the proposed budgets, you can see where those outliers are and the significant changes as compared year over year. And finally, I, this again is one of my favorite slides because it really does show the importance of our, our strategy for economic development and diversifying our revenue streams, as well as the importance that Measure S has with the city. Because you can see that sales tax on the left-hand side of that graph, it is approximately 50% of these general fund revenues that pay for all of those core resources, of course, services from the city. And approximately half of that is from Measure S alone. So while citizens typically think, oh, property taxes, that's where the city's getting me is property taxes, and that's where all my money, typically, property taxes, we receive very little of that comes back to the city government. So that's, you know, less than one quarter of the revenues that we receive. So I'm going to go through just a little bit more to reiterate. So while, while I just said the property taxes, you know, it's not that much, it is still very important to the city operations. It is a significant part of our budget, and it is definitely a requirement and what allows us to have the fund balance, as well as our capital projects improvements that we're looking forward to. We are looking at the assessed applied CPI increase of approximately 2% and an approximate overall change of the property taxes as an increase around 3% of our total revenues for the next year, or not total, for property taxes for the next year.
Angela, I would say the one attribute of property tax, even though it's only a quarter of the revenue, it's very stable, very stable revenue, of course. So unlike sales tax, which is very non-economic, it can fluctuate significantly. Property tax is stable. That's, I guess, that's why, you know, Paul Ditterick and others rely on that, it's very, very stable revenue source.
Absolutely. It's very important to the city. So it's not, not to be minime, but it's, it's, that's why diversification is also very important, but yes, property taxes is very stable. And that's why we can, we can rely on it and know that we're, we're pretty close to our target and, and consistent with our budget. Sales tax, so we do have a minor increase in '21, '22 with an offsetting decrease related to our estimated impacts from the Amazon distribution center reallocation. We are expecting that to be a clawback function where they will go back. We, we're not sure how far back in time they're going to go to clawback some sales tax, but we are trying to be very conservative in estimating how, how much is going to be reduced from that. And so even with that reduction, we are anticipating the increase in sales tax revenues. And again, that's derived from the different major industry groups that are in Khatati, primarily building a construction, fuel service, food and drug, and the county pool. And as you might remember, the county pool, a big component of that for 2000, 2021, was related to that Wayfair finding where we're now able to crack the wall from the county pool.
And after internet-based sales, which is a newer phenomenon in California, and I, I think it was 2018 potentially that the clawback, due to the redistribution attack from the distribution centers, they were talking clawing back as far as 2018, I believe.
So that's where we are. So we're anticipating it, but we're still thinking we're going to be coming back up as things come up.
I do have a question for clarification, if I may.
Sure, why don't we go ahead? Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt you there, but just on the, when you talk about the clawback, are you thinking that they're going to go back to revenue that we've already received or they're just going to reduce going forward that, that revenue?
Maybe you want to go ahead?
Yeah, so it's yes and yes. So they account, they account for, yeah, they account for it based on revenue already received, but don't typically ask you for a check for that. They just essentially deduct it out of future payments over some agreed-upon period of time.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you, Ms. Burges.
Yeah, no, it's fine. Thank you. And hopefully it's over a period of time. Previously, once you TFA had other adjustments, they were at, just taken out of a single payment. And you know, they, we receive those payments monthly. So we are anticipating that they have a plan to, to spread it, but. Okay, so moving forward, so other taxes. So again, this is where it's primarily made out of our cannabis business tax. So our estimate for 2021 was approximately $571,000, which was 17% higher than budgeted. And our proposed budget for '21, '22 is at $600,000, which is an increase of approximately 6%. And this is related to new cannabis businesses, licenses coming online, as well as their increased sales. The license permissions, permits and franchises, there's really no anticipated significant change, except for a small increase in business license taxes, as well as the franchise fees and the franchise fees related to garbage is primarily the change there. For rents, we have our final year of the $20,000 payment from Smart Train Station, renting out the, the train station depot. And then we have our continued rent from leasing holdings for cell towers, as well as we're hoping a recovery as we continue to open up more of our economy, is to have those room rentals and those park rentals, which bring in, you know, around $30,000, $45,000 every year, which was a very, very small amount this last fiscal year because of different things we could do in limited capacity, but not what we are typically used to. So we're hoping that will balance that with a strong resurgence as people want to get back out there and have events once it's safe again. So other agencies, so we do have our public safety contract services with Snoma State. That is budgeted at $187,000 for the next fiscal year. The development and public works charges for services, so this is a significant decrease from 2021, and that's really due to the completion of the development at Kessing Ranch. The police charges are increasing. Post-COVID, we had a model where we were going to focus on non-cumulative community assistance. But now as we go back in, we're going to do a lot more traffic safety and ticketing, right? That's what it means. And so they're going to be out in the streets a lot more, doing those ticketing events. And so that would then increase that revenue. The other revenues, primary, what drove those different changes was administrative reimbursements are where those come in. And so those are deposit accounts, other activities that we do that are directly reimbursable from those activities. One of those activities was an increase in the admin services due to $50,000. We did that bond refinancing. And so we got compensated for our time and, and service in creating that bond refunding. We also have recreation revenue, lives under other revenues. And so class revenue, just like that park rental and building rental decreased significantly during COVID-19, during the 2021 year. And so we're anticipating in the 21, '22 that should come back up after the shelter in place orders lifted and we open up more of our economy. So before we jump onto a next, I think we want to go back to just opening it up for any questions about the revenue streams before we move on to the expenditures.
Thank you, Angela. Do we have any questions? Or Councilmember Ford?
Just a quick one about why the estimated investment earnings are so low.
So we have been very lucky. We, so cities are very restricted in what type of funds that we can invest in. We're subject to state law on that. And so we have had a significant amount of our balance invested in life. And so that balance, they had investments that were spanning out numerous years that are now coming to term. So we were able to ride a higher interest rate for a longer period of time within life than other funds or what you see at money market type funds right now. Unfortunately, since that's now caught up, their interest rate's going to trail behind the other markets. As they continue to rebound, we'll continue to decline. the other markets as they continue to rebound, we'll continue to decline as their investments are aged out. Now they've bought other securities that are at much lower rates than these other new investments. So we're going to have a trailing interest coming in and we don't anticipate those, those interests to come in. Like I had a meeting with our investor and I think the highest rate we can get was a three percent, or sorry, point three percent rate for fi- for three years. So there was a little step in there, but it, there's just nothing out there and that we can invest in where we could get a significant return like we were previously.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I, I will add real quick to that. You know, several years back, actually more than several, Orange County set a precedent that created a bunch of state law. I don't know, when Orange County went bankrupt because they were invested in a lot of risky things. So that really locked down the options, but, but that being said, you know, Angela and I are always looking for higher, you know, balancing the operating cash with things, you know, like investment, investments that are higher earning. And I think once we get past some, some bigger questions earlier in the year, we would like to circle back on the investment policy. Kind of go a little deeper in that question with the council members. So more to come.
Thanks.
Thank you. I don't see any, any other questions, Angela.
Okay, great. Thanks. So moving on to the general fund operating outflows. So these are the expenditures by department within the general fund and these are the operating expenditures. So not talking about capital transfers out. And so this is all the breakdown by those different departments. Now note that we do present this in a comparative format from budget to budget. And the reason we present it this way is because budgeting is a lot different than anticipated actuals or actuals. Actuals include changes in variation, staffing that was not filled. Whereas budget, we are conservatively budgeting based on full employment. So everyone, every open position, like I said, is staffed. Those insurance rates or the healthcare costs, they are going to be there for every individual for the full year, even if that position's not held currently or we're seeking a position to be filled. It's staffed and budgeted at that full cost. And so that's why we like to show that difference budget to budget as opposed to estimated actuals to budget. And so you'll see here that we have an anticipated change overall is consistent with those change in the staffing. As well as changes primarily within our insurance and, and the compensation pieces where it's the, the MOU agreements, the negotiating agreements and staffing pieces. As well as those projects that were included within the individual departments as we provided during the strategic planning session. Those would also be included in here within those components of the different departments that those projects are within. So again, here's just the comparison of year over year from the proposed budget to the adopted budget from last year. Showing that change year over year. And here again, looking at the total operating expenditures, the different pieces of those operating expenditures and broken out in, in a pie format of where the allocation of those expenditures are. So the highlights of the operating outflows, again, I feel like I'm being redundant, but the cost allocation. So talking about the premise that goes into this, we have numerous contracts or costs that affect all the departments across the city, including water and sewer. And so those contract services are then allocated proportionately across all of those departments. So we get into this allocated contract services or allocated services for a total cost. So that way we make sure we're encompassing the total cost of operating that department because they do have to have a piece of my cost that I have to have to do our audited financial statements every year. So that gets proportionally allocated across all the departments based on our, what is our FTE, our full-time equivalent. And that also includes things like utilities, janitorial costs, lighting, PG&E, you know, all those different costs. They do get allocated proportionally based on that basis. Other departments, again, budgeting at full staffing and anticipating that those positions that are empty to be filled and they're filled with full here. It includes all those negotiated MOUs and those changes, so it doesn't include those that are not fully negotiated. And the lump sum payment of the purse, this is that million dollar unfunded liability payment we make in advance. Less than a million dollars, so nine hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar payment we make in advance in order to save approximately thirty thousand dollars in, in additional interest charges from CalPERS. We made it in the payment plan. So we wanted to present this slide this year to briefly talk about these increasing insurance costs. So we're seeing this base cost increase year over year as our city operations goes. And it includes both our, our baseline entrance, which includes our workers' comp, general auto, property, et cetera. So all that additional insurance cost as well as also our health insurance. So these total insurance costs, insurance costs, and their impacts to our city budget. I'd like to turn, turn it over to Damian to talk a little bit more about, you know, what we're anticipating for the next budget year.
Yeah, thanks Angela. So a couple of things I just wanted to point out, if it wasn't maybe already obvious. So the, the first four years are either actual or esti- or estimated actuals. The last column is proposed budget. So you do see a significant difference there between actuals and proposed budget with health insurance. And that's the, that gets to the point that Angela made earlier, that we assume full staffing and we assume a bunch of healthcare assumptions for the unproposed positions. There's nothing unusual happening with health insurance. It's going up at the normal kind of inflationary rate. But that's why it looks bigger in the proposed budget than the actuals. So I would expect at the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two year that that health insurance part of the bar will be actually lower than what we're showing for the budget because we budget conservatively. Another thing I wanted just to point out in seventeen eighteen, between seventeen eighteen and eighteen nineteen, there's a big jump in the brown part of the bar. That's primarily due to workers' comp cost changes. And it's not, you know, Khatati pools with a bunch of other cities. And so there's nothing special about Khatati with workers' comp. It's just the pool wasn't collecting enough money for the total workers' comp liability. And so the pool, as REMF, started collecting more and has been surcharging all of the members for workers' comp to try to deal with the deficit in that particular program. So, so that's the jump in the brown part of the bar between eighteen, or seventeen eighteen and eighteen nineteen. But even if you look at, you know, seventeen eighteen to twenty twenty-one, you're going from six hundred to almost, you know, one point one million. So we're quickly approaching almost doubling over four years, the cost of insurance. So it's, it's significant. And what we're looking at for this next year is a lot of uncertainty around, so property insurance rates have gone up significantly around the big losses that insurers have incurred due to severe weather events, fires, things driven by climate change. And then also on the liability side, that concept, I think I've mentioned before, is social inflation. So we're seeing jury verdicts that used to be one or two million dollar verdicts are now, you know, thirteen, fifteen million dollar verdicts. Because juries are just awarding more money for, for cases. And so on the liability side, that market is, is gotten very hard. In other words, it's, it's hard for the excess insurers to ensure those losses and they're all insurance companies diversify, so they didn't diversify across programs and they also diversify risks geographically. And, and so we're still, as we're moving into the next, you know, tw- next year, twenty-one, twenty-two, we still haven't gotten excess insurance rates yet. Because it's literally going to be a last minute thing because the insurer, the insurers are dragging their feet on setting the final premiums. So, you know, we probably won't know that until May, mid to late May on some of these insurance lines. And, and the excess insurance is harder to get as much insurance as we've had previously as a pool. And it's also, also rates for like liability excess for the pool. The rates that are being quoted are thirty-five to fifty percent more. So it's, you know, there's significant insurance changes. It's not a, it's not a good market for, for liability or, or general. And then of course, there's that sort of historic issue with workers' comp that we're still dealing with to get that program healthy. So anyway, there's a lot, there's a lot kind of embedded in there, but I just wanted to give everyone a flavor for what, what's coming up with insurance, what's been happening with insurance and what's continuing to happen with insurance. Thank you, Angela.
Yeah, thanks, Damian. So yeah, so that is definitely one of the, one of the many things that we have to pay attention to and be mindful of and projecting forward and planning for our future. And we're thinking where these things might lead and go, not just for this upcoming proposed budget year, but also for futures going on beyond and planning ahead. And so that is a big piece of, of what we're doing, not just with insurance, but with other costs. This is a big one this year that we are really strategically looking at. So looking at a department by department level, what were the highlights by department was changing? So for the city council, there's not really a significant change other than we have the continued allocation of that shared indirect cost, primarily the city utilities and other contract services. And the significant other expense includes the dues and subscriptions and the allocated insurance. For the city manager's department, we have the continued inclusion of the public information services under that city management department. We have the reduction of expenses related to hopefully not having an election this year. We also have the reduction due to the end of the one-time COVID expenses. So we have the council-approved COVID-related economic development support expenses that we had under that department. For admin services, the significant change is that we're budgeting at fully staffed and we're recruiting for an intern in the future. And we increase the fiscal fees incurred by the city for the general fund revenues. So all of the fees related to collecting the revenues, we go ahead and house them under the admin services department. As we receive the revenues, we allocate them then to our department. For the community development, the change is primarily directed to continuing and, and new housing element projects in addition to grant-funded projects. The public works department includes the changes of being fully staffed, which includes a laborer and a new maintenance worker. The continued allocation of the shared indirect costs, utilities and contract services again. With that additional staffing comes additional FTE, comes additional allocations. The significant increase in other expenses is due to, again, that dues and subscriptions and other allocated insurance. And again, or as a new piece of it is that operational funding for the Ronda Politi Ranch that we're anticipating next year. For the police services department, we have the continued investment in the technology services through the public safety consortium costs. Additionally, we have increased costs for training and the correlating costs for overtime. So it's not just like we, like we talked during our strategic planning, there's the cost of the training that was deferred during COVID. There are certain trainings that were not able to be attended or performed during the shelter in place. And so now we have that plus additional trainings that are, are desired. And, and the correlating, when you have somebody out at a training, you need to have their replacement body in the department and that usually equates to overtime. The significant other expenses include other allocated insurance, recruiting, some small tools and equipment as well as the vehicle fuel. So there are the ones as well as the public works department that are out in vehicles doing their services to the community. The recreation has their annual subscription to RecDeft online where you can go and sign up for any of their events or classes that they're going to be hosting. And their significant other expenses include allocated insurance and big fees. And really the code compliance, we're not seeing any significant changes there for budgeting purposes, just to keep it conservative. We, we know we have our contract for our code compliance and we're not really anticipating significant revenues. Because we don't want to budget based on anticipated revenues that might not come to fruition. So really that gets us to the end of the general fund expenditures. So if we want to take a brief moment to take it back for questions on the expenditures.
Thank you, Angela. Are there any questions from the council at this point? Councilmember Ford.
I'm looking at the, the table in the packet that sort of compares several years in a row because twenty twenty-one was such an anomalous year with COVID that it makes more sense to me to compare to nineteen twenty than to twenty twenty-one, either adopted or estimated. And I know that what's in the packet are actuals from nineteen twenty. So I just want to check, in your list of changes, say for the police department, which is our largest line item, that there were no personnel changes indicated, no new line items, anything like that. The, the police budget compared to nineteen twenty is about twenty-five percent higher. And I'm just checking that over that two years, does that include some personnel increases? Or is that all these other costs like training and increased insurance costs and things like that?
So I, I believe we have not increased the FTE for the police department. We did slightly bump up a, a part-time position to be a little bit more than fifty percent to like sixty percent last year, but we have not increased the personnel numbers for the police department. But there is the increased COLAS per each individual. And since they have a larger staff volume, just like public works, when you add more staff, they get proportionally allocated more of the contract services. So just as we, as our insurance increases, they get a, a corollary increased proportion of that insurance. And PG&E utilities, they get proportionally allocated more. And so for every increase in that piece, it, it increases more in their department.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Damian.
I, I was just gonna add, I mean, that's, that, that's what I've seen at, at least as the single biggest driver is the allocation because they have most of the personnel. In that department, they get a bigger share of all the allocated costs. And so that tends to be one of the primary drivers of cost change.
Okay. And then can I ask one more, Mary?
Absolutely.
Okay. About the city manager's office budget is about a hundred thousand more than it was in the three years prior to the pandemic. Is that primarily the, the increased investment in public information? Or, or is it just these other costs?
So it, I mean, I think, and Angela, I'm sure you have some more detail too, but it, it definitely is public information. There's also economic development contracts that are run out of the city manager's office. So contract services, direct con- contract services as well as, of course, there, we do, the city manager's department doesn't have its own share of the allocation as well. But that's, I, I think those are the two primary drivers unless Angela have anything else.
There is one additional step. So we did go from having a intern work in that position to an actual, it was, there's such a capacity need in the city manager's office. We do have now a full-time administrative assistant, at least, of title, for Crystal, who's rocking it right now, I'm sure, in that department. So that was a significant change. Again, with that change, you now have a full-time FTE. That increases the other allocated expenses, et cetera.
Great. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks Angela. Actually, I, it seems like she's been there forever. So, yeah, it went from three FTEs to four over that time period.
And Damian, it's the chief. Also, you know, we did add personnel when we went into contract with Sonoma State, but that went into contract with Sonoma State, but that's offset by that hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar revenue. So, so for Councilman Ford, that's also something to consider over the years?
Thanks.
Yes, thank you, Chief. I, I forgot about the dedicated Ford, is that?
Councilmember Harvey?
Thank you, Mayor Moore. This is, I guess, for the police chief. Also, it changes from year to year, the number of reserves we have depending upon what is available for you to be able to hire. Is that not correct? Which impacts the budget?
That's correct. And so we're, we're, every year we're funded for three. We've never got there. We've never made that goal. We have one right now. And they can only work a thousand hours a year. That's their cap. So we've never met that goal. And actually, I brought that to Damian and Angela's attention during this budgeting process. And we're looking at those numbers as well. So, good point.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions up at this point. Angela, go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you. So after all the general funds, so again, so those are the other funds that aren't special revenue funds or dedicated revenue funds. So we're going to jump right into the other special revenue funds that we have. And while they are considered special, and they are fairly straightforward and not as convoluted and additional detailed because we do not have staffing, we don't have additional, you know, allocated contracts that run through special revenues. And so I just wanted to provide to you a summary in the presentation of, again, what are special revenue funds. And it's a group of accounts that are established by a government for a restricted use. And this has to be a legally restricted use. So you, our council, would have to tell us this is a revenue stream that we are dedicating for the specific restricted use. And so these special revenue funds changes, though they are associated with departments, it's kind of good to have an understanding of, of how it is. So we have these funds, so these are really monies, but they're managed by general funds departments. So these department heads of these departments are the managers for these special revenue funds. So community development runs the inclusionary housing, the bed tax linkage affordable housing, as well as the special fund. The public works has the traffic mitigation, park and loo, community development block grants, the gas tax, MTC streets, community facilities districts, RMRAs, as well as parks measure M, as well as the police department has the public safety and the K-9 program fund. And the cities manager's department runs the PEG grant, as well as the Southview Business Park and the access bond proceeds funds. So these are all dedicated revenue funds. So really, year over year, we don't anticipate significant changes in these funds. And we would just like to highlight these different changes that we have proposed in this budget. And the traffic mitigation fund, we have those contributions from Motor Park that we're anticipating to receive, which is going to be used for the traffic flow improvement project. So that's, that was one significant change for the traffic mitigation fund that we're anticipating that we see from them. The park and loo, we've adjusted for the timing and expected project completion dates for the park and loo fund. We have a new fund for the Southview Business Park Fund, and I think we had this in the budget, you know, last year. But we wanted to make sure in our presentation that we showed that it is presented as two, Fund Two-One-Five slash Two-Two-Four, because it was the refunding of that bond had the history in the Fund Two-One-Five. And then all the new activity is in that Fund Two-Two-Four. So it is consistent. It is the same special revenue fund. It was just refunded. And the best practice in accounting is to close out the one fund when it's refunded, that special revenue fund's gone, and now it's refunded into a new fund. The inclusionary housing includes the scheduled payments on the intergovernmental fund loan from the sewer operating fund, as well as a potential one-time distribution to the Jamie Lane Housing Project. And the CDVG funding for the West School Street Pathway was concluded in twenty twenty-one. The funding was received in full and we actually have contributions backed to the general fund for previous funding that was received from the general fund that was then reimbursed from that CDVG fund. So in conclusion, we are still proposing a really a balanced budget that's prudent on all aspects. We're going to maintain those operating reserve and those requirements of the twenty-five percent going forward and exceed them. Our city staff are going to continue to update the council on any significant budgetary changes prior to budget adoption. And again, we're going to bring back to council or to the study session any revised changes for, in a summary format to the general fund. And we'll bring back the capital projects and enterprise funds at our next study session. And we're continually committed to exercising prudence and integrity with managing of these funds. Even when it comes to investments where we can earn, you know, nothing or a little bit more than nothing, we want to make sure we are doing the best for our community and earning what we can and using our monies wisely to the best benefit of our community. So that's it. We'll just open it up for final questions.
Thank you, Angela. Councilmember Harvey?
Not a question, but just for the benefit of the new council members, one of the items that highlights us being prudent in getting the best return was Angela and Damian's suggestion for us to borrow money from one fund to another fund because we could pay ourselves a better interest than we could get on that money. So just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you. I was going to bring that up, and I'm glad you did because that explains it for those that may not be aware of it. Councilmember Ford?
I feel like I should have caught this in there somewhere, but can you explain why twenty-one, twenty-two shows, shows such a lower reserve? Like, why is the reserve dropping from seven to four something? There was something about spending two million of that on capital improvement projects. Is that right?
So in the budget, if you look at packet page thirty-nine, you will see it transfers out. So this is a plug for the time being based on what our anticipated projects are for what we had programmed in streets and what we have forward-looking in our current CIP projects going forward. Those, again, we're, we're figuring out as more grants and stuff are available. We're, we're still working on finalizing those numbers, but we have that four-point-five-million-dollar transfers out. So that is a significant portion that, why, that's a significant piece of that change there. So if you added that immediately down to the bottom line, or even if you kept it consistent with our prior year contributions of transfers out of around two million, I mean, we're, we're anticipating more than doubling our actuals.
Yeah, in a way, um, sorry, go ahead, Ben.
No, no, go ahead.
I, I was just gonna add to that, that, you know, definitely, the, the way I typically look at it is I look at the operationals, you know, operational revenue versus operational cost. That's the, to me, that's more, that's the most important piece because, I mean, reserves are important, obviously, too, but, but looking at that and making sure there's daylight between your operational revenue and operational expenses. Because if, if you have a positive sort of cash flow in the operations, then you're essentially putting money in the bank. And what you're seeing in this proposed budget was, was, as Angela said, just an estimate under, on the transfers out. It's a very large transfers out for streets and parks-related projects. But that's a one-time expense as opposed to an operational expense, which can tend to largely roll, you know?
Mayor Moore, can I ask a follow-up?
Certainly.
So, so this is just because I'm new. We use that reserve fund as, as basically our way to accumulate funds to, to do major projects as well as our rainy day fund. Is that right?
That is absolutely correct. Yes, that's what that reserves. So, so the twenty-five percent threshold, that's a, really a requirement that we need in case of emergency. So even if we want to pave a street, it would take additional council approval in order to dip below that twenty-five percent of that operation, operating expenses in our reserve fund. So above that, that's our additional reserves that we accumulate and we use for our capital projects, as well as other special projects that might not be capital-related.
Great. Thanks.
Certainly. Vice Mayor Lyman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Angela, for the presentation. I am really pleased to see where we're at. This is a much better place than last time we did this last year. So I'm sure we're all feeling some relief. I have a small question, very small compared to most of what we're looking at. It might be more for the city manager or police chief. But I wanted to ask about one of the special revenue funds, and that's specifically the K-9 special revenue fund, which you'll see in packet page sixty-one. So this I know started long before the current city manager or chief or any of the council members or any of us were here. And if I understand the story correctly, I believe at the time, there was an interest to start a K-9 program. But funding was tight in the community and it was essentially said, well, you can do this, but you need to go out annually and fundraise to take care of the costs. And we've held to that agreement through the years, which was logical and I think a good way for us to do things. And clearly, it's been successful and worked. But I wonder now, as I read that, seeing as the cost annually appears to be minimal, we're just a little over seven K. I mean, it's under ten K. After Measure S, does it seem appropriate? I don't know if it seems appropriate for us to be going asking for donations for an individual program. If it's worth doing, perhaps we should fund it. I think certainly too, after my discussions earlier tonight with my colleagues, I think it'd be a much better use of the time of any officers involved. They could spend more time certainly in a deeper involvement with community policing, interaction, any sort of community meeting, rather than just fundraising. So I just wanted to put that out there. There may be some reasons that I'm unaware of something we're missing. But it just struck me that might be a logical thing to do because I don't know if we need to continue to do that. And I think it sends a poor message. And we said, we, give us Measure S and we can fund these basic services. If we feel this is a reasonable addition to one of our core services and, and it's so small, we probably should fund it.
Vice Mayor, it's the chief. So some background, we had a canine before my time, as you mentioned, Django. And Django passed, I believe it was, or it's believed it was a vector sting, like a wasp sting. They lost that dog. That's when they had a big fundraiser, again, before my time. And I believe that was the catalyst for the ongoing fundraiser. Our current dog, Remo, he was free via a grant through Sean's K-9 program. So I did receive the dog at no cost, which was great. The costs associated with the canine are the vehicle, the officer stipend to be a canine officer, and there's veterinary bills, food costs, et cetera. But I'm open to whatever council wants to do as far as that goes.
I just seem to remember, and, and perhaps we're not doing this anymore, perhaps it is we're taking care of, but I remember up to at least a few years ago, when I would go into the Redwood Cafe, I would say, see a little collection thing by the front for people to put some change or a dollar or two in to support the canine fund. And at the time, that made a lot of sense. And it's a good way for a city that's struggling to pull itself up by its bootstraps with community support. But now that we said we could do it, just a thought to put forward. I don't know if it really has to be addressed as part of this, but I just wanted to put that out there. That might be something we should consider at whatever point staff feels is appropriate, or if my colleagues feels appropriate. But thanks for the background, Chief. That's helpful.
Well, and just additionally, the, the biggest fundraising effort was by sending a, a letter out to to residents and businesses annually asking for donation funds. In recent years, that's been the biggest that, by far, how we've received the most money for the fund. But whatever the city manager and council wants to do, I'm
I might be misperceiving that perhaps it's something the community enjoys participating, they feel that they're backing this. But it, it was just at least my first take when I was looking through this today. I thought after Measure S, it just doesn't feel appropriate to me to do that. And that might just be my own perception. I'd be curious with my colleagues' thing. Thanks.
And I will add too, that the, that's what you, what you perceived is, is accurate, Mark. The, the way it's budgeted was just presuming that it's funded through fundraisers as opposed to a general fund transfer in. I think if we were going to do it, a general fund transfer in, just for everyone's knowledge, you'd be, you know, you know, probably on the order of, well, the ongoing expense is you know, between five and, well, it, it averages five and say six thousand. So I think, you know, that would be the, sort of the order of magnitude of general fund transfers and if we were to fund it out of the general fund.
Exactly. That, that was my thought, too. It looks like it's obviously when we're looking at a decent budget in the year, the temptation is to look, people always look to spend the money. And you got to be careful. I'm looking at this budget and saying, even though we're good, we're not in a position to be incurring a lot of long-term, ongoing rolling costs because you don't know what that'll stay. But this is so incredibly minimal, at least from a city budgeting standpoint, but perhaps not for our own personal pocketbooks. But from a city budgeting standpoint, with our size, it seems pretty small, so.
If I could just add on to, one of the things we did this last year is incorporate more of our fees and abilities to receive funds for fees on our online portal. One of those was our dog licenses, licenses. And along with that, the police also did add the ability to donate to the canine fund on there. So those people who are dog enthusiasts have a way to also contribute to that portion directly on there. So that is one thing where the, the city staff, the police aren't out there sending letters and doing things. It's just kind of a passive component to it.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you, Mayor Moore. I have three questions. First of all, going back to the reserve, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. When we do a major, when we've, we're doing this major transfer out for capital improvements and that's causing our reserve to dip down low. But am I correct to understand that the reserve will probably come in a bit higher than what we're budgeting for when we aren't able to necessarily fill every staffing position and our insurance costs come in a little, little lower? Would that just feed into additional reserve at the end of the fiscal year?
So you're looking into glass ball, but yes, exactly. So if we're, we're consistent with how we've budgeted historically, and if we don't fill all the positions and the positions aren't filled for the whole fiscal year, and insurance costs don't skyrocket as we're, we're anticipating, then yes, we would have additional fund balance at the bottom as well as due to decreased operating expenses. And likewise, on the revenues, if those are a little bit higher than we anticipated, we receive a little bit extra, you know, sales tax that was unexpected, or Amazon doesn't claw back more years or a higher percentage than we're anticipating, then that could also be higher than we're anticipating, which would increase that bottom line reserve percentage.
Is that sort of why, why we're comfortable doing such a large transfer out for the capital improvements that, that our reserve might stay a little? Does that feed into the, the thinking on that? Or would we be, would we be completely comfortable if the reserve came in at the exact budgeted level at the end of the year? Would we be comfortable with that level of reserves? I guess is my question. Or are we, are we sort of banking on that it would be a little higher?
So, yeah, let Damian.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would, I would say that we aren't explicitly banking on it, we didn't hire, but you know, the, the reserve policy is twenty-five percent. So that's definitely a bright line that we wouldn't cross without some explicit, well, it requires explicit direction by council. And sort of, I, I think from a comfort level, if we're talking about a one-time expense, like a capital project, that is, you know, that kind of thing, I, I will just say, I think like a capital project, that is, you know, that kind of thing, I will just say, I think internally among staff, 50% is kind of sort of a ballpark comfort level. We wouldn't really want to go a whole lot lower than that because then you start getting down closer to 25%, and so, I mean, we're already doubling what our reserve would be by policy, but, so I guess to answer the question, informally, at least among staff, 50% ish is about the level of comfort, when we're talking like capital expenditures and we expect that reserve to build again after the project's done in that one year.
And to bounce off that, also with, with that, and other council members can add on to this, with the significant increase in that transfers out for capital projects, which we'll go more in detail with in the next session, comes decreased operating expenses. So, the streets right now are, can be very expensive to maintain, as opposed to brand-new streets, which are very, very cheap to maintain. So, the ongoing cost of that maintenance is the savings of that investment now. So, just like investing your money in a bank and getting that return on it, we will then have a significant, you know, increase possibly right now, but future savings on that ongoing operating expense to maintain our roads and infrastructure.
Yeah, well, thank, yeah, thank you Angela, I actually, I neglected to say that, but philosophically, the point of it all is to really try to get over the hump in the really heavy expenditures, so that we can get to more, to a lower-cost maintenance mode, which would then free up capital in future years. Probably not next year, we're probably looking at another, you know, three to five years of heavy investments in these things before we get over the, kind of over the hump on this.
Hey Laura, did you have a third question?
That was actually only one, Mayor Moore, I thought two more, that's all right. The second question was about cahoots funding. The study period that we're hoping, hopefully embarking on soon, I think was supposed to last seven to nine months, which would mean we'd be done with that sometime around December this year. So, is there, I know it's sort of up in the air how much funding if we were to implement this would come from the county and federally, but does our portion of potential cahoots funding live in this budget somewhere, and where would that, where would that live?
Angela, so, no, it doesn't, it's not in this budget right now. You know, my, my thinking, and I think, you know, even with Angela talking about it, the intent really is to, is to do the study, and then when we get to mid-year, we should be in a good place to make a educated budget decision about that. So, so it's not, it's not explicitly mentioned in this budget, but it would be something potentially that we would have to pick up, and then there's other mitigating factors such as you mentioned, like the county might be contributing some of the money, and then also with the American Rescue Plan, the federal legislation, that's also supposed to backfill up to 85% at least for the first three years. So, so there's some other things in play that, we didn't want to just throw a bunch of money at it yet until we had a better idea of what that's going to be.
Thank you. And my last question was about the project staffing for the Community Development Department. I was looking back at our list of projects, proposed projects that we had in our strategic planning session last month, and it looked like there was about 1.2 FTE allocated for projects, and I just was thinking, is that, is that going to be sufficient for the, all of the huge number of things that we're going to be working on this year, the housing element update by right, the bicycle pedestrian master plan which has gotten pushed off? The numbers on some of those projects were kind of low, and I, maybe, maybe that's sufficient, I just knew at this, I don't know exactly how much staff time those things take. But I've been thinking that we're in the middle of a housing crisis, and I'd like us to be able to be really agile and creative, and if there are opportunities that come up, be able to allocate staff time to exploring new ideas to help us meet our revenue targets. So, just wanted to get a sense from you, do we feel like that 1.2 FTE is really going to be enough to achieve everything that we want this year?
So, I'll take the first stab at that, and we are still, I would say generally speaking, we're still having internal conversations about what's the right balance of, you know, contract work and, you know, staffing allocation and how that's gonna, how that's gonna finally settle out in a, in the final proposed budget, but a lot of the, a lot of the work, a lot of the housing work is, is, you know, with, with contractors, because we're always trying to strike a balance between, you know, when we're talking staffing, making sure that we're, that we're striking a good balance with bringing staffing on that is more of a baseline, long-term need. We don't want to staff up for like a project, for example, and then not have them having anything to do in a year or two, so, unless it's a temporary assignment. So, we're still, we're still having those conversations internally, like what exactly is the right balance for staff allocation versus contract allocation? So, this is a, this is a first shot at it in this current draft that you're looking at, but, you know, there may be, there may be more updates to that when we come back to the second, second study, second study session.
Thank you very much.
And I would just add, you know, some of the, the carrots that are coming with some of the sticks from the state this year includes some grant funding, and so that's the primary increase in the Community Development Department's budget is actually allocating some of that grant money that we have received, you'll see it's a 20% increase. However, the state also provided some regional collaboration grants directly to ABAG MTC, and we're, we're working with them to try to leverage kind of our portion of that money to also add to the housing element update process. So, in addition to that, SCTA has also applied for a grant that we're hoping they get, we'll know more of that in the summer, that we can then leverage some of their work that they're going to do to feed into the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. I was telling the city manager a little bit, you know, I pride myself on running a pretty lean department and efficient, but what that may mean is that we do need to come back, yeah, mid-year to ask for some additional funds to finish out some of these things we have taken on our plate, but I'd rather start conservatively now, and then if we need to, once we get further into the year and kind of start some of these things, then we'll come back to the council. And I know that's maybe the opposite approach, some other folks may say is the better way to budget, you know, ask for more than come with less, but that's not how I tend to run the department, and we do have one person who's a half-time dedicated to our department who's transitioning out, and so when we refill that, that half-time position, I'm hoping to get somebody who has a skillset that we can leverage to further add to some of the work that we've committed to do.
Councilmember Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that I kind of like the idea that the Vice Mayor put forward on the K-9, having been around for a while and been one of the volunteers to have to stuff envelopes and send out requests, it is a tedious process, and I'm not sure that we get as much back as the effort, the manual effort that's put into that. I like the idea that they have added that to the dog license renewal, because I think as was pointed out, those folks that, you know, are really K-9 oriented will typically tend to be your people that want to make those contributions, so I like that thought. And then my question is, I know we don't have the list of capital projects, but I think it's alluded to the fact that by raising the capital funds, I'm hoping that we're going to get back on track with our street paving work, because I know we had to cut back last year, but we were making really good progress, and I know that the community was really pleased with the progress we were making, and then, and then there was last year. So, please tell me that we're going to try and get back on track with that.
On the, on the streets, I'll, I'll start, I mean, Craig may have something to add to this, but we do have a project that's out to bid right now for street work, primarily around the bird section, that area, it's a street, so that's the, that's more the street maintenance as opposed to the street reconstruction type work. So, you have to do both, right? You have to keep your good streets in good condition and then fix the ones that have failed, and, and so that's what's happening right now. We're hopeful that we'll hear back in May from MTC on the Quick Strike Grant to see if that's confirmed. If that's confirmed, then the timing of that project would be, you know, given the Caltrans local assistance process, we probably wouldn't be in a position to actually award a contract for construction until early next calendar year for that, for that works. That's West Sierra and La Plaza, that's the physical area we're talking about. We have, for some of the safety elements of that, we have split that off, as I think Craig mentioned previously, so the, the three-way stop at West Sierra and school and the Cypress Crossing and some other safety elements have been split off to be pushed forward out of what was part of that project, and so they'll be happening here in the very near future. And then the last thing I'll just say is that we, you will be also seeing at the, I believe it's scheduled for the next council meeting, a contract for another major paving project on the west side. So, West School, West Cotati, includes Richardson, and a, like a new trail over the hill from the School Street Tunnel over to West Sierra. So, so there's, there's a lot of, there's going to be a lot of, as it's programmed right now, at least tentatively, and we'll be talking about it more at the next study session, but there's a lot of, a lot of paving work coming up.
Great, thank you, that makes me happy that we're getting, because we were making such good progress, because as you pointed out, it's going to take us, you know, three to five years to really kind of get through that, so, and in the meantime, as was pointed out, stuff is continuing to deteriorate, so, thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey. Mr. Scott, you were going to jump in on there?
Yes, thank you Mayor. So, I just wanted to give the Cliff Notes version of what the city manager said. We have a five-year street CIP, and after the dust settles this year, we will have built the first year of the project, we will have made considerable progress on the second year, we will have designed, if everything goes as planned, the third year, and we will have years in the update of the five-year CIP next round, we have placeholders you'll see for years four and five. So, we're, if everything goes well, we will have cleared out one, two, and three, and then we're going to update the, we're planning on updating the five-year CIP this time next year and having two brand-new out-year projects designed. So, if, if, you know, I, I think this is going to give you preparation for the next session if you look at the, the five-year street CIP, and we are adhering to that plan. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. I don't see any further questions from council at this point, I will, I see we have a couple of attendees, so I'd be happy to see if they have any questions for us, if you would, Ms. Burgess.
Thank you Mayor. For our attendees tonight, just use your raise hand icon if you'd like to make a comment. And that will end public comment.
Thank you very much. So, I don't, you know, we, it's a study session, so we don't have any action on this at the moment, unless we're going to move, we're not going to move into the consolidated schedule at this point, correct?
Correct, yeah, so far.
I was just going to say correct.
Okay. So, if that, if we don't have any further comments or anything like that, I would make, I would adjourn the meeting, and we will see each other shortly, and the meeting is adjourned at 7:44. Thank you, staff, thank you Damian, thank you Angela, Craig, the rest of you, Chief Parish, and the rest of the council. Have a great evening and stay safe.
Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you.